Ball, please.
Councilman Anderson. Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps.
Here.
Councilman Albright.
Dear.
One present, I mean four present, one absent.
All right, thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Legions? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. All right, item one, consider approval of agenda as presented.
No changes.
Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on June 21st and June 28th, 2012. Motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
New business, item three, consider resolution 12-07-07, expressing appreciation for President of T T U Bob Bell, sponsors Mr. Jim Shipley.
I'll be happy to read this, or you can read it if you'd like to. You want me to read it?
Go ahead.
Okay. Resolution of the Council of the City of Cookeville, Tennessee commending retiring Tennessee Tech President Dr. Robert Bell for service to this community. Whereas Dr. Robert Bell took the helm as President of Tennessee Tech, I don't, I like to say Tennessee Tech. On July 1st, 2000, and has served not only the university but the upper Cumberland region, becoming a familiar face to all in the community during his tenure. And whereas Dr. Bell is active in the community, serving on many boards and commissions, past and present, including currently as Chair of the Cookeville Industrial Development Board, Vice Chairman of the Cookeville-Putnam County Chamber of Commerce, Executive Board Member of the Middle Tennessee Council Boy Scouts of America, as well as a member of the Cookeville Noonday Rotary Board for Blood Assurance. Whereas Bob Bell is admired by both local citizens and his peers, striving to meet and deliver excellence in all challenges faced, a driving force and the leadership to move Tennessee Tech forward, in the vision to construct the Nursing and Health Services Building in Ray Morris Hall and seeing the project to fruition, working to enhance this region economically as well as on the front lines during the T S S A football championships, working with Cookeville to ensure a successful and enjoyable event extending hospitality to all that visited this community. Whereas Dr. Bell's participation in community events, civic, social, and numerous organization chairmanships reflects his servant's heart and sincere dedication and commitment to this community. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Cookeville, Tennessee, that on behalf of the citizens and employees of the City of Cookeville, deepest appreciation is hereby extended to Dr. Robert Bell at his retirement for the tremendous contribution he has made and will continue to make to the City of Cookeville and the upper Cumberland region. Now therefore be it further resolved that this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office.
All right, thank you, Mr. Shipley. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Your words of wisdom from the council.
I just want to say that we all appreciate Bob, he's a good friend, he and Gloria, and he's given a lot to this community, they're staying in the community, and we're lucky to have them here. I know that he's, he also, not only, these are just a few of the things that he has done that's listed in the resolution because he's active in so many other things, and we, he has served the Tennessee Tech in a good leadership capacity, and it's something that we all thank him for. And we're just, we've had really good leaders in that position, and he's been one of the best.
Thank you. Anyone else? I had the honor to speak at Dr. Bell's retirement dinner, actually it was a big honor, I was nervous. And I wanted to just kind of reiterate one or two things I said that night, as far as, I mean, he's representative for Tennessee Tech, yes, and he's been a great representative for Tennessee Tech, but he's a great representative for the upper Cumberland, for Putnam County, for the City of Cookeville. And I've learned a tremendous amount from Dr. Bell the last almost two years now that we've been in office, crossing paths with him. The first ever, after we got elected, we had the Governor's Conference on Economic Development in Nashville, and I got down there the day it started, and walking into this little reception area, and I guess who's one of the first people I see, Dr. Bob Bell. You know, he's President of Tennessee Tech University, and, you know, I don't know if any other university presidents were there that day, but I know Tennessee Tech's president was there that day. And he was there because we were actually talking to a particular industry trying to recruit them to Cookeville, and that was his sole reason for being there, and that speaks volumes. He realizes he wears many hats, not just a university president, but he is ambassador to the region. So, anyway, I think he's done an excellent job, and he will be sorely missed, and I think Dr. Philip Oldham will do a great job, but I feel sorry for him because he's got huge shoes to fill, so. Anyway, anything else?
He did well.
All right, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item four, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 12-06-09, amendments to the zoning code relating to automobile manufacturing in the CI, commercial industrial mixed use, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, automobile manufacturing and related manufacturing uses are currently not permitted in our CI district. Currently, they're only allowed within the LM light manufacturing and HM heavy manufacturing districts. As you may know, that our new business industrial park is zoned as CI, and it's felt that the prohibition of automobile-related manufacturing could significantly restrict the future development potential of our park, so this ordinance would amend the provisions of the zoning code insert within the CI as a permitted use automobile manufacturers, automobile component, parts, and supplies manufacturers. It also amend the chart of permitted uses to show these uses as permitted within that district. It's been approved by the planning department, or approved by the Planning Commission and recommended by the planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments from the council?
It's like this is an oversight we call.
True.
Anything else? Any questions, comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Mr. Mills. Item five, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 12-06-10, amendments to the zoning code, section 220, CN, neighborhood commercial, to add uses permitted on review of single-family attached dwellings and condominiums subject to special conditions, sponsors Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, over the past several years, the planning department has received requests or inquiries about the possibility of locating townhouses and condominiums in our CN district, which the CN district, the commercial neighborhood district, is a mixed-use district intended for single and two-family dwellings and small to moderate-sized offices, personal and business services, and limited, very limited general retail businesses. It has a maximum building square footage footprint requirement of 15,000 square feet. It also allows no more than two attached dwelling units, and the maximum density is 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit, so you must have 10,000 square feet to locate a duplex. In receiving these requests, we began a study about, of all the different locations of our CN zone, and it's the planning department's opinion that single-family attached dwellings or townhouses and condominiums would be appropriate use in the CN district, provided there are certain conditions established to protect the integrity of the district, and these protections would include, at a minimum, maintaining the overall density, so 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit would still be required, so for example, if you were going to do a townhouse, a three-unit townhouse development, you'd have to have a minimum of 15,000 square feet of land area. We'd also require the submit of a site plan and compliance with architectural standards. So this amendment would revise the CN district to allow a use permitted on review, and what that means is that the developer would have to submit their plans to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission would review it. It also would amend the section 234, the chart of permitted uses, to show this as a use permitted upon review if adopted. These amendments have been approved by the Planning Commission and are recommended by the planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
Have you had any calls on this, anybody complaining, or?
No, we've not. I've had some developers call to see about where we were in the process, but I've not had any complaints, and I don't believe we had any complaints or concerns when this went through the Planning Commission. So, Woodford, do you remember any?
No.
This specifically came about, about some property that abuts the new expansion of Dogwood Park, there's been some interest about doing a townhouse or condominiums around the park, and we believe that would be an appropriate location for those, which we basically have four areas within the city that are zoned as CI, and it would be along First Street, some on South Walnut, and then along 10th Street and North Washington. So there's just four areas, and we believe that this use would be appropriate in all these locations, provided these conditions or safeguards are established.
Any other questions? Anything from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. All right, item six, consider approval of acquisition of property assets of Restoration Healthcare of Salina, D B A Cumberland River Hospital, for the strategic plan of Cookeville Regional Medical Center Authority Healthcare Network, serving the upper Cumberland, sponsors Mr. is C R M C, Cookeville Regional.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. Before you tonight is a resolution to acquire Cumberland River Hospital, which has been approved by the Board of Trustees of Cookeville Regional Medical Center prior to this. Cumberland River Hospital is a 36-bed acute care community hospital, serving 8,000 residents in Clay County. It has the makeup of its 28 med-surg beds, eight inpatient jerry psych beds, it has a, apologize, home health agency serving 10 counties. As part of the purchase, it will be an asset purchase, which will involve the land, the buildings, the equipment, the fixtures, machinery, and other personal properties, two medical offices and a residential house that's located on the backside of the hospital. The purchase price will be $6,745,000, to be paid in cash, $745,000, $700,000 will be held back till meaningful use dollars are paid to ensure that they comply and fulfill their obligation to implement the meaningful use project. Fair market value appraisal has been performed, and the rate falls on the fair market value. V M G Health completed that valuation for us, and Southeast Reimbursement Group did our third-party analysis on the payers. Turn it over to you if you have any questions regarding. In addition, the company will be set up foremost as a 501(c)(3) organization with both the City of Cookeville and the authority as members, and it will have the same approval process as Cookeville Regional does today, so this everything would come to City Council, that would otherwise come to City Council for Cookeville Regional.
Thank you. Dr. Langer, could you explain a little bit about meaningful use dollars?
Sure.
Of course, we've heard a lot of it.
No, no, the federal government has a pool of money available for medical centers and private offices to implement electronic medical records, so there's a push across the country that if you're not implemented by a certain cutoff date, you will be penalized a percentage of Medicare off of your reimbursement. There is roughly $4 million that's allocated for Cumberland River Hospital that they will receive when they meet the meaningful use stages. The first payment, they've already gone live, will come in roughly a few months from now, once they can, what they refer to as certify, that they are doing the things they have to do to meet stage one. And part of the viability of this acquisition is the fact that the meaningful use dollars are tied to it, and that's why it's vital to have those dollars, and that's why we were adamant that we have a holdback of $700,000, so that we wouldn't close the deal and they'd stop working, that they have a chunk of money held out there to comply with the purchase, or to receive after the purchase, I'm sorry.
And meaningful use dollars is not, it's not something that's just, I guess, extraordinary to Salina Hospital, I mean, even we have that.
We at Cookeville Regional have, have basically multiple of two of that roughly, that we're, you know, trying to reach also, and have received some payments already based on things that we're implementing every day.
So it's something we do every day, something we're very familiar with, it's not just something that's new to us, that we hope we get this.
No, this is what, this is what we get paid to do.
Right. All right, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from the council?
You want to go?
Just, just some thoughts. I think that I understand why you want to do this, and I feel that there's a need to do this. And after thinking through some of the things, I know that there's been some, some issues as far as, as us asking for things that, that haven't been provided yet, but you all have a board, and your board is what governs basically your hospital, although we do have approval for this, and some, there's a place in here where we have to put the trust in you and your board in order to do what needs to be done, and that's, I guess that's kind of the way I feel right now, is that I may still have a few questions about this, but I am putting my trust in your board, the leadership over at the hospital, in order to see that it's all taken care of before, you know, that everything's taken care of before you sign all the papers. That's where I'm coming from.
I can assure you, we've done our due diligence, and our boards looked at it, and the management teams looked at it, and we've been as forthcoming as we can with everything, that all the requests that have been made to us.
Well, I for one, of course, I sit on the, on the board of the hospital, and so I'm pretty familiar with the situation, and I for one, I believe in the strategic vision that we have moving forward. We are protecting our, I think our greatest asset in the upper Cumberland is our location, our geographic location, nobody can ever take that from us. So I think we need to do everything we can to protect our largest asset, of course, Cookeville being in the very center of that, and of course, this purchase would allow us to protect our, our, our asset, our territory, and at the same time, I think it, it could be a, a good business move, not just defensively, I think offensively it's a good business move. I also feel like you have to put a certain amount of trust into your administration, into your board members that, that this council picks, and, and I feel like we've done that, I trust these guys, I trust the board. I think after we got our structure set up, which was the verbiage of the contracts and how we set up the whole, how you guys set up Cumberland River Hospital as a 501(c)(3), make sure we work through all that, if we've got that language in there to protect everyone, and we believe in the strategy to move forward, I think it's a good move, and I think it's something that Cookeville Regional and this city can be proud to do. So that's where I stand on it.
I'm gonna go ahead, I've written a few things, comments, C R M C wanting to purchase the hospital in Salina came to my attention back in March, I believe. At first I was uncomfortable with this because the hospital was in Salina, and I didn't know we could legally do this, and I was told it might take a private act from the state legislature to do that, but since then, the type of transaction has changed, and it's unnecessary to have a private act. It was understood by me that the due diligence would be done by C R M C concerning the hospital in Salina. I think V M G Health was hired by Cookeville Regional to determine a valuation and an opinion for a purchase price. I would have thought the C R M C would have hired somebody locally to check and go through on a visit to give an opinion of the physical condition of the hospital building in Salina, i.e. the roof, H V A C, and any structural issues with a building that is 45 years old. As far as I know, C R M C did not do this, has been done so recently at the request of the City Council, and the information that we have received is disturbing in that the Salina Hospital is in need of immediate repairs. To me, this is a potential money pit for the C R M C and the city. It is extremely important that the city get the best deal it can, since the city will own the real estate. I believe the appraisal is way overvalued considering the existing condition of the facilities in Salina. I do not disagree with Cookeville Regional Medical on their strategy to purchase the Salina Hospital, I just do not agree with the purchase price. And since the people of Cookeville have put a great deal of trust in me to represent them in all matters that concern the city, I cannot vote favorably for this purchase. This is not a good deal for the city or C M C the way it is written now. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I don't know about you guys, but I, I'm pretty, I feel pretty uncomfortable, mostly in a lot of reasons, because I've been an employee for Upper Cumberland Anesthesia and working, working at C R M C for, used to be C G H, for many, many years, and I've got two kids in college, and part of the reasons why they're in college, and I can afford to send them to college, is because some of the great decisions that the administration and the board, the board has done, and we, I see a board member over there, Drew, thank you for coming. Couple of words that have been thrown around is trust, and I, I do have implicit trust with the board, because some of the decisions that have been made are, have been excellent. And I've not necessarily agree with them as a, as a peon, just doing work down the O R, I've not necessarily agree with them each and every time, but you know what? I've, I've done okay, you guys have done a great job, and I, and I really appreciate that. Where I'm torn, and where I, where I feel uncomfortable, is that, is because of the seat I'm sitting in right now. If I was just still sitting in the O R, I'd probably be a lot better with this, but now that I have been elected by the citizens, as, as all the council members have, I, I feel it's very, very important to make sure that we're doing, that our, our board and our administration is doing the very best job that they can. And I'm not, I'm not trying to micromanage this at all, absolutely not, but essentially the buck stops here, if something doesn't go right with this deal, this, this, we're gonna be the ones that are gonna catch the heat for it, rightfully so, we got elected to do this. Council has advised us, there, there have been some things, and just the process, and just the process, that have not been done, and things such as title searches.
Survey.
Survey, things like that, and I, personally, I would feel a lot more comfortable if those things were done and on the table, and as, as our mayor mentioned earlier, the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted, I would feel a lot more comfortable with that, okay? If that was done already. I do not disagree with the strategic vision, as a matter of fact, and I've, I've sat in your office, and Dr. Langer, and mentioned to you, I appreciate, I appreciate some of the strategic vision that this, that this board and your administration has done, but I really would like to see, just to make sure, or some assurance, that all the, all the details are gonna be taken care of, and we're not gonna find ourselves having a problem with this later on. Can, can you help me and address that for me in some?
Sure, I mean, the, the titles have been cleared, and we're purchasing title insurance for that, so the surveys are being prepared, and the attorney, our outside counsel can speak to that, we already have the title insurance, so the surveys are irrelevant for the transaction to take place, that does not need it to happen, if you're purchasing title insurance, the company's ensuring that the titles are good, and we have our outside counsel here, if you need further explanation on that, we'll be happy to do that. Regarding, I'm gonna jump back, if it's okay, Mr. Woodford's comment, you know, why we didn't use a local person, and it's nothing against anybody local, but nobody locally has the expertise to do a fair market value assessment of a healthcare facility. We sought out V M G, which is probably the foremost expert in hospital valuations, they do valuations of hospital transactions for H C A, LifePoint, Tenet, that's what they do for a living, so, you know, for, for the council to, we went out and sought after and got the best representation to do the best analysis. Lance, who works for Butler &amp; Snow now, formerly Miller &amp; Martin, is the largest healthcare, you know, law firm in Nashville, so we found the best people to do the evaluation, the best attorneys to put this deal together, you know, we sought out the expertise, because locally, it's not like sending, I know recently the council approved to purchase a building here, and everyone keeps referencing that building, the difference when you purchase a building is, you purchase a building and you put administrative staff in there, it's a debt and a liability, if you have to put a roof on there, it's not revenue generating, if you have to put a generator in there, there's no money. When you purchase a company that's running, you have a maintenance budget, you're seeing patients, you're generating revenue, so there's a maintenance line item, and if the roof leaks and it costs $10,000 to patch the roof, it comes out of your maintenance budget that you have, because you're generating revenue, and you pay for it. Unlike assets that the city has bought in the past, where you buy a building for administrative purposes, it's non-revenue generating, this is a company that runs, that makes money, that day one, we're buying an accounts receivable, you relate to that, so there is money coming in the door, day one, and if something happens, it gets addressed. I mean, this is very different than purchasing, you keep getting reference to a, an old building, this is very different, we're buying a hospital, you're buying a company, you're buying an entity, you're not just buying an administrative space, so it's not the type of assessment that's performed when you buy, you know, a building or a warehouse, does that?
Yeah, I mean.
Do you want the attorney to explain the, the titles to you, I mean, is that, I don't know if that's an issue or not?
I see it boils down to, you know, once we have the, we have the, the structure set up on how we need to structure this, this, this business, if we believe in the strategy, which I feel like we do, then at that point, we need to have the faith in our administration and our hospital board to move forward to close property, to close property and to close business transaction, and, and I think that's what it boils down to, I, I trust the hospital board and the hospital administration to, to close the property transaction side of things without, I guess, without us having to micromanage and, you know, come back to us, and, you know, back and forth and back and forth, I mean, at some point, we've gotta, we've gotta say, okay, we, we like where this is headed, we like the, the vision of it, let's trust these guys to move forward and, and do the right thing, and that, that's kind of how it boils down to me. Sorry, I kind of jumped in there on your question.
Did you get your answer, Mr. Epps, or?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Langer, appreciate that very much, and I appreciate the, the work that has went into this, from our council side and from, from your side, is, in many ways, from where I'm sitting, is a little bit overwhelming, because there's so much information that has been provided to me, and I appreciate that, it, like I said, it overwhelms me, and I appreciate all the diligence that has been done on both sides, very much so, so I think a lot of this comes down to just the vote of, of, of faith on where I think things, we think things are going. In the past, this hospital has done this community quite well, from the decisions they've made, and that board is a top-notch, top-notch board, as is our administration, and even though I, even though I do have some concerns with the, with the Ts being crossed, et cetera, I, I think it comes down to me having faith and confidence in the, in the administration, that board, doing what they need to be doing, and they, they have in the past, and I fully expect you guys to keep doing it in the future, so I'll, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for it. I've had some phone calls to tell me not to vote, to vote against it, but I'm gonna vote for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we, we approved City Manager Shipley to move forward with the negotiations of Heritage Forward, now granted, we were probably a little more hands-on on that one, because it was right here in our office, but, you know, we, we approved that for him to move forward with that, with that purchase, and with, also with, I guess, the discretion to walk away from it when it wasn't a good purchase, and so that's kind of how I see this deal. So, anyway, any more questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
They, the hospital provided a resolution this afternoon, sent it over, do you need this passed in resolution form?
We, we, it's up to you however, however.
It's, it's pretty lengthy.
It is lengthy, that's why I opted not to read it and hand it to the council instead. The resolution states in summary that we're requiring this facility, it states that we're gonna, you know, create a 501(c)(3), as you as the, City as the members, and the authority as the member, I'm summarizing, that you're, you know, giving us your blessing to move forward and sign any necessary documents to bring this to fruition.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we can, we can show it as a resolution.
Please.
On the second page, one, two, three, the fourth, further resolved, there's a blank there that is hereby authorized to direct and execute and deliver form on, on behalf of the City Council, who should that be?
I'm gonna defer to council, Lance.
Whoever you would want to have signing authority.
For the City of Cookeville?
That would either be you, Mr. Shipley, or, or Mr. Swallows, however the city would like it to read.
Okay.
We weren't sure how to.
Yeah. Yeah, I just filled in the city manager, the City of Cookeville. Okay, that's all I got.
I mean, would everybody be more comfortable if we just read this?
I mean, would everybody be more comfortable if we just read this? Or no?
I think you might put them to sleep.
No, I'm okay. It's quite lengthy.
All right, just asking. Okay, any other questions?
Just a comment. I want to thank Danny for covering our backs and bringing things to us for us to think about, and you did a lot of work on that, and we appreciate it.
Yes, I concur with that. These guys have our back, and they really, they really do look out for not just us, the entire city, and they work hard. I mean, they're, I refer to them as bulldogs when they get to digging into stuff, but that's what you want. I promise, that's what you want.
They're tenacious.
Tenacious, there you go. That's more eloquently to put it. Sorry, Ken. So anyway, they've done a great job, and we appreciate that.
Anything from the audience, questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Three yes votes, one no, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item seven, consider reappointment to the Environmental Appeals Board, sponsor is Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, Kay Starkweather's term on the Environmental Appeals Board has expired, and she's agreed to serve another five-year term, and I would request her approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
No, I think Kay's a good, she's a good, hard worker, and she's, whenever she says she'll do something, she does it, and you've got a good one there.
And I'm gonna take Councilman Anderson's word, since she's not here, anytime someone is willing to serve, we greatly appreciate it. All right. Any questions, comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item eight, consider awarding bids for annual and semi-annual materials, sponsor is Mr. Greg Brown of Public Works Department.
Mayor and council, we recently bid some of our materials and services for an annual and semi-annual basis. I would request the low bidder for each item be approved.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Anybody want him to read every one of those? Questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Greg, since you're up here, how's Seventh Street coming?
It's coming good.
Is it by the end of the month?
I hope so, yes.
Couple weeks, right?
No matter what, the timetable gets back, we'll be out of there.
Okay.
But the plan is now, hopefully by, should be by the first week of August, we should be out of there.
Awesome.
I know we've got the after dark race, August 10th, so I know we ought to be out of there by then, so.
Phew, that could hurt some knees.
Potholes out there.
Yeah. Unless you want to leave it open for, make it an obstacle through there, we could do that.
Could be. Be fun. Probably wouldn't be the best interest.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
All right, item nine, consider awarding bid for ALS/BLS defibrillator, sponsor is Chief Roger Fuqua from the Fire Department.
Mayor and council, we recently bid a 12-lead heart monitor in April. Part of this bid was that the price had to be good till the 1st of August. We purchased one, and we have budgeted for another one, and I recommend the Zo Medical Corporation for $19,811.25. And this will also give us 12 lead monitors on, at each station.
Okay. Thank you, chief. And do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
And you did this, you separated this into two budgets, right? That's why we put...
Yes, sir.
I commend you on that.
Yeah, good job.
That's a good job.
I have a comment to make, Mr. Mayor. I just, just a quick comment, I had a, without violating any HIPAA laws, I just had a really good friend that went through a significant healthcare issue related to defibrillators and heart care and things like that, and because of, because of the, some of the things that this community has done in the past and continues to do now, in the future, he's doing very well, and he could have done very, very poorly. I know that, speaking from a person who takes care of people like this all the time, he could have done very poorly, but because of things such as this, he's happy and healthy.
We're very fortunate in this community.
Absolutely.
We have some very well-trained people.
Any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, chief. Item 10, consider awarding bids for transformers, steel poles, and cleaning services, sponsor, electric department sponsor Tony Peak.
Mayor and council, we have three different tabulation schedules. The first one is for the 75 KVA transformers. Recommend per supply as a low-evaluated bidder, meeting specifications. The second tabulation sheet is for cleaning services, it appears. No, no, no. Is that the last one?
That's the second.
I think he's doing that on purpose.
Quit messing with our...
He winked at me when he did that.
Winked at you?
Yeah.
Second tabulation sheet is for the steel poles, these are for some steel poles we're gonna use in the industrial park. You'll notice I'm recommending Sabre as the best bidder, in our opinion. We're on a time schedule there, we need the poles within six months' delivery, and Sabre is the low bidder meeting our delivery requirement, and we talked to all the bidders before they bid and told them that delivery would be one of the key things. So I'd recommend Sabre as the best bid, meeting spec. And last is cleaning services. Six different bidders, two of those did not bid. A&amp;M Cleaning was low bid, meeting specifications $1,550 a month, 18.6 a year, we're tickled with that price, and these are the folks that are cleaning for Mr. Kelly and have been for a few years now, and he's very satisfied, and we've seen their work, and would recommend your approval on all three items.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All right, seeing none, I'll vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. All right, this is part of the program where we like to open up the floor, hearing from citizens and/or delegations, anybody that would like to get up to speak. Just ask that you keep it to three minutes, if you could, and come forward, state your name. I'm gonna guess we won't have anybody come forward. Anything from the council?
Nope.
I almost not here, so. So I guess, who has to do the announcements?
I don't know what's going on, what's going on.
Hope everybody had a good fourth.
Yeah. Hope we get rain.
If I could get City Manager Shipley to just clear up a few things about fireworks. A lot of people were under the impression that they're not allowed in city limits, and just, if you could just speak to that just a little bit, just so people can understand why they are, when they were approved, the duration, those type of things.
I think it was 2003 that the council authorized fireworks to be ignited inside the city. Before that, it was illegal. You could buy them here, but you couldn't shoot them here. So the decision was made to allow that, and it's really, this year's been the first year that we've really had any kind of major issue, and that's because it was so dry. And I was in conversation with, you know, the mayor of Livingston and discussions with y'all and staff, and, yeah, we could have banned fireworks, but I'm gonna bet you, a lot of those people that were shooting them after midnight last night would have shot them anyway. And, you know, it makes it tough on the police, because they start going off, they gotta figure out where that's coming from. So we made the decision to just caution people to, you know, be smart about it, and so we didn't ban them. But tonight is, according to our ordinance, is the last day they can shoot them. So if somebody shoots them after that, call us, and we'll try to catch them.
After midnight?
No, it's after 10 o'clock tonight. The only, I just read it today, that's how I know all this. I think I can just rattle this off my head. On July the 4th, you can shoot them till midnight, but you can shoot them from the 1st through the 5th of July, and every other night has to be 10:00 PM when you quit.
And then also at the end of the year, December 28?
Yeah, through July, or January 1st, or...
Okay. So just wanted to clear those things up.
Hmm? Did they shoot them on your birthday?
We could have, we could, we'll work on that.
Okay, work on that resolution.
Resolution for my birthday.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley.
Would you vote for that?
Anything else?
Nope.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.